I'll call to order the regular city council meeting on Monday, October ninth, eighth of twenty twenty. Twenty five, seven, oh, two, P, L. Our first order of business is our invocation of federal allegiance. Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Mayor, I have to thank you and welcome the House of Representatives. Chris, I'm here for you this day to work this city. I pray that you'll help us to have wise decisions that will be thoughtful in our responses and thoughtful in how we listen and work with one another. As we come into this floor, we just recognize the seasons are changing around us with temperature changing, politics changing, with all the different things continuing to move forward. Or we just recognize that you are a constant plus, a constant priority. We just recognize your wonderful nature of you. Like that, that you watch over us this night, that you watch over our leaders both nationally and locally, that you help us as we come into the season of the elections, Lord. That we can, no matter what the result, results, I will look at the end of the day during COVID. But we just thank you for the blessing of our men and women in armed services, our police officers, and we pray especially, Lord, for their focus on the front lines. This COVID pandemic, Lord, we pray that we protect them, we give them knowledge of wisdom to move forward, to help protect us. Thank you for all the blessings that you continue to give us in the name of Christ.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you tonight to our meeting. Continue to bear with us since we're in the midst of our social business thing for our COVID nineteen pandemic is still upon us. So please bear with us and recognize the social justice guidelines we have in place here also. Also, this is, we see, good on that. I'm going to join this later, obviously, here in the chamber. Next order of business, our proclamation and presentations, and it is indeed an high honor to me to be able to present a proclamation for retirement of Paco. Would you be with my jury that night?
Whereas K nine Paco has worked for the city of Malton for eleven years, and is fourteen and a half years old. And whereas Paco is a Belgian Malinois, and was born in Holland. He was certified in two thousand nine and twenty eleven in narcotics detection by the National Police K nine Association. Paco was certified as a patrol dog through the North American Police Work Dog Association. And each year from two thousand nine to twenty twenty, Paco has been in a nationally publicized magazine, K nine magazine. And whereas Paco has had a long and distinguished career in the city of Malton, he has been used on multiple search warrants. Paco has a large number of successful tracks where he has found elderly people with dementia, runaways, lost children, as well as tracking down criminal suspects. He has recovered money from an armed robbery that was hidden by the suspect. He has found guns and other items of evident value discarded by fleeing suspects. And whereas Paco has been instrumental in finding large amounts of narcotics owed his career as a patrol dog. He is responsible for the seizure of at least four vehicles that were used in narcotic transportation, as well as varying amounts of money. And whereas Paco has also done many demos for schools, churches, civic groups, the citizens academy, and the youth council. He has logged over four thousand five hundred hours in training and seminars. Whereas the city of Malton is grateful for Paco's service in helping to keep this community a safe place to live. And whereas Paco is now retired and will live out the rest of his life with the talent he's done at George Miller and his family. Now therefore being proclaimed on this nineteenth day of October, twenty twenty, that the city of Malton wishes Paco a long life and a peaceful retirement after his dedication service. Welcome, Chris.
Camera side.
Also, we have a proclamation tonight, a red ribbon proclamation. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic them. And whereas there is hope when we're on drugs through education and reduction in demand, as well as the hard work of organizations such as the Young Marines or the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol, commemorating the work of the Rike Kiki Tomarao, the Drug Enforcement Administrator of Asia, who was murdered in the line of duty. It represents the belief that one person can make the difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in nineteen eighty-eight to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. Now therefore, I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malton, South Carolina, so hereby proclaim October twenty-third through the thirty-first, twenty twenty, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Malton. And urge the citizens of Malton to join me in this observation and witness to clarify, I have here unto the set my hand this nineteenth day of October, twenty twenty. Next order of business, we have the reading of approval of city council on the meeting, September twentieth, twenty twenty. What would be the pleasure of council?
The presentation presented through.
I have the motion for Mr. Black to accept as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kim, thank you, Ms. Kim. Any changes, adjustments? I have a minor wording on page eight. It'll have under C, one, two, three, four, one down, starts with George Miller. His decision was made go ahead, they kept was made to go ahead. And sort of A and B six, my little word changes. I'll be sure to spell out that correctly. For something I have any other adjustments? You're not always a favorite, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, lice sign. You're not meant to accept it as a justice. Our first public comment section, this will be the area for any item on the agenda tonight. I don't see where anyone spoke, signed up to speak on an agenda item. There will be another public comment section toward the end of the agenda that is open for any comments and that to sign up there. We serve for that. Report from our city administrator, Mr. Matten. Remind you, I think, Mr. Palmer, it's on.
Yep. There may have members of council do not have a report on the city.
Need to tell her she's on.
Ms. Palmer, if you can unmute her.
I've got us.
Device.
Hello?
She should be unmuted.
All right, I'm unmuted. I go one time. I'm gonna raise my hand. It's not that, but um. Hello?
Yeah, well, I think, ma'am, it's kind of clear, but if you, Ms. Palmer, if you would forward me any item of note via email, I'll make sure they're distributed to council.
And on her half, I'll read the email I got from Kim. The Malton Chamber events have been limited due to COVID nineteen. She wanted to extend a special thank you to Councilman Crayton, Councilwoman Kuznar, and Councilwoman King for attending the oyster roast last Thursday at Season's Catering and Event Centers. Ribbon cutting, so we have the Ray Hopkins Senior Center Ribbon Cutting tomorrow morning at eleven thirty. Their annual banquet has been postponed by the Board of Directors to spring of twenty twenty. Christmas activity is coming up already. Breakfast with Santa has been canceled for twenty twenty. The tree lighting is moved back to Thursday night at six P M. on December third. And working with our director, Tim St. Clair, to put together the program that will include some of the Christmas songs from the family Christmas spectacular. The Christmas parade is on, two P M. Saturday, December fifth. Santa and his carriage has been secured and they're working out to getting the permission from Malton High School Band. Also, the Women's Christmas Luncheon on Wednesday, December eighth at the Grand Holland Estate is on. They'll enjoy that. So keep, if you're not on the E blast from the chamber, please call her and get signed up for that. We get that at least weekly and it keeps us abreast of all the activities in our businesses and how they're responding to the activities. So we appreciate Ms. Palmeroy and Chamber. Travel around and visit some of the other chambers that I, I know I'm impartial, but we have the strongest chamber. Pat Palmeroy and her attention to comradeship is one of the best I've seen and experienced. So please be in touch with her and stay tuned with the happiness of the city of Malton Chamber. That was my enforcement, that's all. Okay, next item is reports from standing committees, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of items that are in the committee that came out of committee. The purchasing policy, the law of the people policy, those they took up in just a few minutes. We also have an update from our audio visual playing up that they should start actually this week, correct? They also are pulling wire and grabbing this room for our audio visual upgrade, which is just in time to concede the chamber audio visual working. We have that and I had a bunch of updates, numbers look great for where we're at and this early in the process. As well as an audit update, so auditors were in all of last week, I believe they wrapped up on Friday. So we'll start seeing, we'll have workshops together for the audit coming back. We have that scheduled already, I believe, and I don't have it written down, but I have a update coming off. Other than that, that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, public say to Ms. Kim.
I have that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Public words, Mr. Crayton. You're not involved, Mr. Matten?
No report this time, ma'am.
Sir, building toes, Ms. Kuznar.
I have nothing, Mr. Matten.
The recreation, Mr. Black.
Recreation has happened this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe our publication is out. I want to also pick one of those up, that'll give you an idea of some of the things that are going on inside the city of Malton. Get one of those on your way up, if you'd like. Next is unfinished business orders we have done, we move straight into new business, standing committee items, amendment to the personal policy comes out of finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this came out of finance and policy with the free of amendment's approval. This change to the purchasing policy essentially just for purchases greater than one five thousand, eliminating a requirement to advertise that in a newspaper. Obviously, times are different and newspapers are not as cost effective or effective in soliciting bids when we're looking for this for the business in the state anyway. So you'll notice if we're on page twenty-four, I believe, I have marked for the only page twenty-five, this is where we're eliminating the requirements we have posting that will let them use papers. I'd like to make a motion to reapprove the purchasing policy, Jim.
We have a motion on the floor for Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second for this Kim. Discussion. You're not always a favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, lice sign. You're not motion cares. Which item is the vehicle policy, that you, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This also came out of a recommendation out of unanimous approval. Forty, three D, and for a packet. This is just not picked to the vehicle use policy and incorporating a formal gas part policy program. There are a couple of changes to the page forty-eight, item seven would be full change. We all have that, we've got that change to look at over. The only other change made in here, also to handle to vehicle policy is employees who participate in take home vehicle program. When you require to sign the take home vehicle agreement, which is in dependence as well, we got a chance to look at that. Again, this came out with unanimous approval, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the city vehicle use policy with a team of that.
Mr. Reynolds, I have a motion on the floor for the presidential approval of the government's vehicle policies, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kuznar. Any discussion? You're not always a favorite, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, lice sign. You're not motion cares.
I believe, Mr. Mayor, that was all I have.
Mr. Reynolds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got one more.
Good try. Don't control. All right, so item C, Libby Lane demolition, back to you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this would, this would be for the request of the two oh six Libby Lane property demolition. This came out with unanimous approval as well, I'd make a motion that we approve the use of available matching funds for demolition of two oh six Libby Lane.
I have a motion for Mr. Reynolds.
Second.
Have a second for Ms. Kim. Any discussion?
Just for, there is no new funding needed for this to target, but I know this is actually funded through grants program.
Always good. First, like, what we think this is, it's clear, the motion is for two oh six Libby Lane, which is correct. On the, in the, that's twenty-six, that's the script is there, I just want to make sure, in case there's a homeowner at twenty-six Libby Lane. It's clear we're not, that the motion is to two oh six.
So we're not just going twenty-six Libby Lane.
What did you feel that time, Scott? Yeah. All right, two oh six, the motion on the floor to proceed with two oh six Libby Lane demolition utilizing funds from the grant fund. All those who play to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, lice sign. You're not motion cares.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, now that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Next item, discussion on boards and commissions that's coming through business service, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received several applications for zoning board of appeals and also planning commission. So it's kind of coming up in discussion about qualification for candidates and also interviewing candidates. Mr. Dearhaw was able to get some information from other jurisdictions, what they do. And he's listed out in the packet, the qualifications that, that, you know, we possibly use when we are looking for someone to fill these commissions and boards. So I don't know if you all want to speak about it and give your, what you think about it.
Did this come out of your committee as an action item or just seeking input? Will Mr. Crayton go ahead and discuss it? So. We're just seeking input discussion, that needs to be emotional before.
It doesn't have to be. If you want formally vote to establish, you must be emotional, second. But we, they only want input from council and then we find the policy after input from council, that's not appropriate. There's some we have, can we handle that?
So, so this will just get input from council.
Yes. So, you know, if you, if you review, what's your mind and you have some, some answer on it.
Thank you, Mayor. It is interesting, and I'm glad that we had the conversation in army when we did, because apparently Gringle County Council was paying close attention to what we did. They had homeless and viewer discussion the very next night on their boards and commissions and the way that they're, that they're selected. You know, I, I think that the way things have done have gone by practice in the past. It's been fill out an application, submit it, and you're pretty much the total that you're, you're going to get selected. I think that we're past the point where we need to refine that. You know, a lot of times we see people, when they submit their application, it's submitted for both the planning commission and zoning board. Pretty much saying, well, if I don't get the one, I'll take the other as consolation prize. And the thing is, they're both extremely important governmental bodies for the city. And, you know, I, I know that zoning board doesn't mean quite as much as the planning commission, but that is a quasi judicial body that is the, has the final say on matters before. And, you know, I, I don't think that we need to, we need to give deference to applications that don't have qualifications for where the primary qualification is, I'm retired and I have the time. You know, I think that we need to structure both of these boards because we're planning for the future of the city. We're deciding what the future of the city is going to look like, and we've got some amazing projects in the pipeline, thanks to Mr. Robb and many other members of city staff. So I would like to see us, and I think that Mr. Dearhaw has done a great job in pulling some of the qualifications together from, from neighboring jurisdictions. But we're, we're actually looking at hard qualifications on what it means to be a member of one of these boards and commissions. So I, I appreciate my committee chair in allowing us to have a discussion during committees the other night. And appreciate councilmen in giving this consideration and discussion tonight so that we can go back and refine the policy and bring back to council an actionable item. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussions for the committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add to what Mr. Matten said, I agree a hundred percent. In, in the way we, by practice, have laid it and placed votes on these boards. I think it's probably liberty time, but definitely the right time that we, we look at the process. I wanted to add that not only is an interview process is what committee is to, to bring back to us the direction they want to go in. I think that works too late, so I think it's beneficial not only for the members of the committee doing the interview process, but also for the person who has applied to be on board. Because a lot of times these folks, they think they know what they're getting into, but they don't know all the ins and outs. So I just wanted to thank all committee that committed y'all for bringing up the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Dearhaw, for outlining a path to consider to move forward. And that, again, I think it's a two-way thing for the interview process on our end, but also is equally as important for the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that while I'm disagreeing, this could be refined more in terms of added restrictions on, on the qualifications, on the limit you're pulled candidate. So as we're thinking through refining who can serve in this capacity, we can probably refine how we're selecting out the two serving. So I think that would be one of the things, being thoughtful and trying to have a more hearted approach in, in seeking candidates to fill positions. It certainly, I think it can be, is an ungorious job and I can be hard to fill those positions anyway. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Anybody else? Just like to wait a little bit, I, I love the flow chart, I've been on a Y P guy, I like the flow charts, the decision charts that you made and gave us some examples of that. I think applying that discipline to the interview process will take us a long way. Our city is on the brink of a lot of very exciting things and we've gone through a lot of our himself in order since the last few years and then continue to refine in that. And it does take a certain level of understanding of zoning and what it could mean and does mean and examples of that. So I, I like the process to go back through it more fully. If you have those who would like to be involved in the future and the roles, the direction the city is heading towards. So the sample questions I see here were a bit star type thing, I'd like to see more of those specific to the two different things. As Mr. Matten pointed out, the, the board of zoning fields is pretty much a judicial decision. Once it's made, council does no override, we don't have the authority to override, the only override is to take it to actually a judicial court. So that does seek to need, to need a lot more understanding of the laws and where they apply. I know Dearhaw has done a good job of explaining that to the people in the past as they have been, so. I like it, I'd like to see the committee take it back and proceed a little more forwardly for that interview process and think to find or give us some directions we can go forward. Yeah. It's not, I don't believe we need any action on this, which is, Ms. Kuznar. Back before you, you're. You have it back before you, you're.
Thank you so much.
Next item is the extension of agreement with South County Department of Corrections that comes from reports, Mr. Crayton.
Yes, this essentially is essentially an agreement for inmates. Apparently we're not dealing with COVID situation, this extends our current contract. This extends our current contract, so if things do change already to use them in the future, this is the basic contract. I made a motion that we need to extend the agreement with the South Carolina Department of Corrections.
Motion for just to extend the contract for South Carolina Department of Corrections, is there a second?
Second.
Second, for Mr. King, any discussion? Are you not all those in favor of extending the agreement with South Carolina Department of Corrections, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have a motion for this? Thank you, Mr. Craig. I didn't really want to say, but back to you.
Yes, so essentially, this is an issue on Basswood Drive. Reached out the council, city, looking for additional lighting. It's a very situation. So we, there was a, house is done by Lawrence Electric Survey and it was an area on that road that additional lighting was needed. So provided back to us. So the motion before us is to accept the additional lighting, which costs across thirteen dollars eighty-four cents per month. Additional charge and have the additional statement for people. I have been homeowner with this, go to what we like to be, agreed to. It also personally, people actually asked for it. So, so I'd like to make a motion now at this time to, to have the lighting agreement with Lawrence Electric to have this additional lighting to Basswood Drive.
And motion on the floor to accept this.
Second.
Second, Mr. King. Stone debate. Any discussion? Mr. Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I may not have the hand in the bag on this, but on page eighty-six terms, we got the triple options on terms. We need to fill out any of them. Motion to do the funding of life, the first term, five, ten years of us.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, do we have any contract on the left of this front third? Or we have five, ten, or what's the rest, we have the warrant on, on there the life?
Yeah, because of the number of lights that the city, and the number of years that the city has provided services, it's probably not a set amount. For this, my, my suggestion would, would be to at least ten years or even specify thirty years among the amount. But this, this, this is certainly something council can, uh, provide discretion on.
Yeah, I can, I can remember having a contract agreement in the previous year, it just, you know, must have been good on me. You know, it's just a, that was given, or I'm given, and we just continue to play for it. But I don't know. Ten years of us, we split it by other, you know, we don't have a contract agreement on the others, if there's anything we don't. I think the city put a time limit on that.
Yeah, and the, the, it's, the contract is, the succession of these is constant. It's not the city that is signed to the H O eight. I don't know if this neighborhood has an actual established H O eight. So for the city, the city will be responsible for it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem whatever council pledged, but I just noticed there's no terms on that. The left line, that wasn't included in the vote. I don't have a problem whatever the guard council is doing. For that, if we can do it, just leave it that way for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I, uh, I think, Mr. Black.
I just have a quick question. Under the membership, the latest is a member of the law and who actually cooperate in this Arling city member?
I, I would believe so. I double check just to make sure.
Okay, because there was just an actual top dollar, uh, being a member. I don't know if that was their own or.
I think it was. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'll double check this to make sure, I let council know.
Then motion with a time limit or just the council staff?
We, we worked out, we do this, we've got a four day calendar. Well, ten years, we'll be ready. I don't know, there's just five years, three years, four years, under here.
Or just authorize staff to, authorize staff to negotiate that.
And so make amendment to the motion to allow the staff to, to offer to negotiate the timeframe.
Amendment to the original motion to authorize staff to negotiate the timeframe, so second. Second, Mr. Black, is there any discussion on the amendment? Do you know all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you remember, we amend it, pass and go back to the original motion, has amended, any discussion, disdiscussion on that? Okay, the motion to accept the lighting agreement with Lawrence Electric for one ton Basswood has amended to have staff negotiate the timeframe. So that motion down, for us, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have a motion as amended, Mr. Craig? The West Butler Road Traffic Signal Agreement, this is Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that, upon, based on final review and approval from legal counsel, we approve the traffic signal agreement with full properties LLC.
Motion for Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Aye.
Discussion, Mr. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very basic agreement. This is a residential property that's being developed along West Butler Road in Highland Ridge Court. That there was identified the need for a traffic signal. And the, the developer is applying for funding assistance from the County Transportation Committee. City would not be responsible for any of the cost, instead, we're actually going to be serving, assuming this agreement is approved, as an escrow agent for the construction of the project through County Transportation Committee.
Any discussion? Do you know all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have none, the motion carries? Back to you for all of Lawrence Road, Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that contention upon final legal review and approval, that we approve an agreement with Access One Hundred LLC for improvements to Lawrence Road.
Motion, second.
Third.
Second, Mr. Craig. Any discussion, Mr. Matt?
Uh, just a quick description, Mayor. Access One Hundred LLC is developing property within the city. And they have identified a section of old Lawrence Road, old Stages Road maintained by S E D O T that need to be, need some, some repair and some improvement, facilitate that. We're working with them for funding assistance through County Transportation Committee. And this is very similar to the previous agreement that we just approved, where we would be serving as an escrow agent for the project and not responsible for the costs.
Mr. Matt, any discussion? Do you know all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have none, motion carries? So, yeah, next item for potential discussion with the general force of committee's whole, what's the pleasure, Mr. Matt?
Mayor, I would move that we discuss committee in a whole, using the informal method. Items eight, aye through eight, yeah.
No informal consideration, for us, second.
Aye.
I hope second, is there any discussion? Do you know all those in favor of considering these items in form, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you know we pick up items, aye through L, inform, so, uh, project crust station, property cannot develop, hello, Mr. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we approve a lease agreement for formerly project crust station, which is now known as Pops Cabin Creamery LLC to use the Gosnell cabin.
And I have a motion to use the cabin by, uh, Pops Cabin Creamery, second, for Mr. Craig. Any discussion? Do you know all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have none, motion carries? It is a contractual matter on Center Point, I'll put it back to you, Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve an agreement with Center Point Land LLC to retain qualified personnel to conduct inspections, acceptance testing and project material certification and the performance with South Carolina Department of Transportation's Quality Acceptance Sampling and Testing Guide for the construction of pedestrian bridge.
I have a motion, is there a second? I'm second, Mr. Craig, any discussion on this? Mr. Reynolds?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor, there is no money to impact the city for this item. This is initially paid for out of the project on credit. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? There is consideration for executive session to consider contractual matter, the pleasure, Mr. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we enter executive session to consider contractual matter related to diversity and inclusion training as allowed under State Code Section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight.
I have a motion for executive session, Mr. Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. King, any discussion? All those in favor, and thank you for returning to executive session, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you know who can take the session? For our audience, we will, we need you for executive session to consider this item, we need to back, be back to showings, it's eighteen, right back. We're retiring from the executive session, would someone like to report out?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of the executive session, made a decision, no decisions remain, no votes were taken.
Next item agenda is possible action items discussed in executive session. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, after the executive session, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the shop range consulting relating to our city's diversity and inclusion training.
Check. Okay, I have a second to Mr. Mattney. Motion for Mr. Reynolds, any discussion? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to point out that there has been a fund for such side for this already. Mr. Mattney approved at our last council meeting that they, that an amendment, a budget amendment that would provide a, a format to pay for diversity and inclusion training for a council. So they're the funding source already, Mr. Mayor.
I just pointed out, after Mr. Reynolds, I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract for shop ring consulting, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have none, motion carries, back to council? We are now to the audible agenda for public comments, just the public comment section that is open for any item that citizens or law that are business owners would like to go for this council. First person, Mr. Thornton. Now you know, for the record station payment, your address, please sir.
Hello, my name is Thornton, Mr. Thornton, New York, South Carolina. Here, talk about Mr. Black, still needs some time. One of the things that I read in my Bible, you know, screams, oh, have a tendency to want to repeat Bible. These things, right, is Proverbs six, sixteen, Proverbs six, sixteen. These six things do the Lord hate. Yeah, seven are an abomination to me. A proud look, a lying tongue, a hand that shed innocent blood, a heart that divides with imagination, feet that be swipping and running to mischief, a false witness that speak lies, he that source discord among his brother. These six things do the Lord hate, seven are an abomination. So when you make these comments about N W A C people in a terrorist group, they haven't been a terrorist group to anybody. They haven't went into any church and killed anybody. You can't name one incident when N W A C people, any group like that, went anywhere and killed. It's really appalling for someone to make a comment like and say they are a terrorist group. Jesus said, eight, John eight, six, eight thirty-six, no law within the kingdom of heaven. Matthew twelve thirty, every word you say, you be judged by it. We also reading about what goes in a man's mouth, it follows him. Not what goes in, but what comes off of a man's mouth. And we know the words that came out your mouth. We watched Western Carolina spell fire people for racist comment. We watched Kyle Larson get suspended from NASCAR for his racist word. My question is, if it wasn't racism, why were you on a racist side, making racist comment? We also talked about even our president doing things to make racism more prominent in this country. We hear Daisy Graham talk about the good old days of segregation. We hear you. All these people grew up in segregated times. Look at your friend that came by for your support, and all of you grew up in segregated times. So yes, we do have a problem in America with the last best of the segregation, try to risk equal head of heat. You had the N W A C people, Sammy Dillon, Leo Robinson, Carl Allen, Black Lives Matter, whites, blacks, red, brown people, all colors from your community and your neighborhood, come and speak and ask for your resignation. Yeah, that's why is this important? Momma can't say injustice anywhere affects justice everywhere. Why is this also important? Because Marvin annexed with Gringle County. Not only does this reflect on the city of Marvin, it also reflects on the county of Green. One of the things I met, missed Sunday, to one of the Sunday, that's one of the mothers that her son died trying to protect her in the manor night. We had a Black Lives Matter event downtown and she came in. And it would be who, this city council, just to sit down and talk to her and ask for that Confederate flag, dude. Ask to talk to her about what happened that day and how they brought someone in there, they had a Confederate leader. It's one thing to talk about someone, but when you actually meet the people that you talked about, then you understand how severe this problem is. She talked about how her son died, the same hurt, not other child's life. No Confederate flag, person of the N W A C people don't carry Confederate flag, but you let you compare it to N W A C Confederate. Race people know what they're doing, they take the most pride organization and cultivate that character. That was used to use spirit, make people hate the N W A C people. Why have this council here, a blue moon? Like I said, we've seen actions from colleges and universities, but yet all of this is minimal. Those actions are severe. It's a reflection of Gringle County, not just your community, you annexed with them. It's a reflection. And like I said, and somehow or another, we always see, the voters, what going on, how they all want to minimize something, let's get back to business session. Well, go look up in the table how he was murdered because someone stole his life. Let's go with Amy Cooper and Christian Cooper. I could have been killed because a woman got on him and told him, said a black man is trying to kill him. He was just trying to tell the man, you need to have your dog on you. So I'm in with this, and this is a warning to America. John eight thirty-six, who the sun set free, it's free indeed. God delivered black Americans from slavery. And this pushing America, the kind of push black Americans back into slavery, and I don't know a lot. And that's why you're seeing all this plague on this country right now. Two hundred thousand people dead because of what people think is okay to put people back into slavery. But that's good old days, as Daisy Graham would say. Thank you, Mr. Black.
Next, uh, Mr. Joel Ann Chandler? Space, man, for that.
Is it okay if I don't wear that something? My name is Joel Ann Chandler, I'm twenty-five inches short of Marlin, South Carolina. I'm the owner of Auburn Open Air Market, which is produced on the corner of Con Road and East Spur Lane. Recently, I received a letter from DOT stating that a lot of their project is, um, anyway, hey, uh, we had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, for the DOT people. Basically, what they want to do is take away my entrance and up to twenty feet out of my parking lot, which is close to market. This should not be happening. This is where I second their turn lane, which is true. They just spent several million dollars improving this intersection. Bridge's road has a right turn lane, a left turn lane, a center line to go across, plus by lanes. Market has been in business for close to forty years. We are a very essential reason to the community, taking thousands of people. This market started from that and we've been running track controllers since nine nine. I'm in Columbia twice a week, loading that track controller with produce. We have many elderly and disabled people, mothers with young children, that will have no access to the market. They will not be, they're not able to involve long distances. They should not be penalized or made to stop shopping at the market. We're open every day, except Christmas Day, or at least day clock. We support local farmers, I buy everything I can from South Carolina farmers. We have numerous local vendors in the market. If there's anyone here that hasn't been to the market, I would invite you to come out there. I'd be sure the place that you give them time, normally the park about its pool. And I can get away with this access, which I appreciate them. And I would ask that DOT take all this into consideration. This market, like I said, if there was ever an essential business, this is the lot of jobs, the produce will be growing out on and be available to the customers they have to meet. We cater to our customers, they're very important regardless of whether they're buying a piece of bubble gum or a type of container post. They're important to us. We have people from every nationality coming to market. We have people that have been coming there since the market opened. We have an exhibit coming every night. This brings a lot of money into the economy, helps keep people healthy. We have local honey, which is good for allergies. We have elderberry syrup, which is good for your immune system. We support numerous local businesses. We do hot water dinners. I mean, Harvard, Princeton, Carolina, they have very popular dinners, with their hot water dinners. We offer food dairy on high nails, and we are the number one meal to go. This has been a major asset to people, especially during this time when people couldn't get out and they need to be, the first festival, the projects, the town. I've had pineas, beautiful, that work in your yard. And all this uncertainty, we need consequences that we can count on. We can always count on that to be there for us. And people need to have market to be able to shop there for their produce. Need, whatever it is, they need, this market should not be shut down because of this. Second, they have turn lane, I'm totally ready.
Questions, comments, questions, uh, council request?
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually at, at the market, uh, last week with, with a county council member. I asked Mr. Chandler to provide the diagram from DOT so that we could get a visual of what this looks like. And this is, it's appalling. DOT has already chopped off a large part of her property before, and now they're coming after her again. This is not the plan that we as a council previously approved in concept or design. And I would ask that we as a council urge DOT and work with our county council representatives, work with our legislative delegation members, to find a resolution that does not include chopping off the front of Ms. Chandler's property for an unneeded turn lane. That would put the Auburn Open Air Market out of business. They've already had one bite at that apple, despite they shouldn't have in the first place. And I would hope that we would work to prevent another bite at that apple. Not just for her, but for individual property rights as a whole. And if any council member after the meeting, we'll leave this unfolded or on a roll. But, uh, for any council member, come take a look when I adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
May I also say that they are planning to file a lane, East Butler, that passed my property, not all the way in the park. We should appreciate our small businesses, we should do everything we can to help them continue to do business as they have in place, not try to destroy.
Also, I want to say that I have to please say to those spots that come around late last week, uh, that I worked available in the conference room upstairs, for any council members to come around. Our, if any citizen will reach out, I just want to say that I'd share that. The displanary drawl is from the contractor that was selected by DOT. Any other council concerns? Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a concern as much as a comment. I did want to take up a chance to tell you my appreciation to the mayor, as well as Mr. Platoon, for the background work done on the diversity and inclusion consultant. Mr. Mayor, while Mr. Platoon interviewed and vetted several consultants for this role. I'm taking an afternoon and early mornings and just want to tell you I appreciate your efforts and effort. And also take a minute to publicly tell the concerned citizens involved how much I appreciate, how, how you guys have helped us navigate through this situation. And certainly having a consolidated voice, the doctor has been helpful. And I'm just appreciative how, how you guys have helped us go through this. So just wanted to take a few comments. Um, again, appreciate your background work that probably wouldn't have been noticed or talked about if I didn't do it here. As well, as well as Mr. Platoon and of course, Mr. Phoebe Paul. Uh, my comment is, we have an election coming up, so the first one, I think, is all of them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other council concerns? You're not in the pleasure of council, return soon.